Welcome to the August 11th, 2015 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you here. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim of East Hampton Media for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Media, Channels 5, 19, and 20, is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Follinsby, do you have some announcements for us?
I have only one announce, well, actually, two announcements this evening. The next school committee meetings are September 8th and September 22nd, and the meetings will begin at 6:30 PM here at 50 Payson Avenue. The first day of school for students is Monday, August 31st, 2015, rapidly approaching.
For correspondence today, this evening, we have a letter that was sent to me as chairperson of the school committee, and I'd like to read it aloud. It's from Management Solutions, specifically Andy Poccat, who's president and provided our business management services for the past eight years. And he has finished his time with us at the end of June, and he sent this letter to the school committee. "The purpose of this letter is to publicly thank the East Hampton School Committee for allowing us to provide you with school business management services for the past eight years. Despite the financial struggles the district has faced, I'm confident that we are leaving the school district in a more solidly financial management position than when we arrived. We cannot take all the credit for this. The administration in the district has risen to the occasion when it came to making tough decisions, always keeping the best interest of the students in mind. The same can be said for the school committee. For the 10 years that we have been in existence as a company, coupled with the over 60 district reviews I completed for the state, I can say with assurance that the East Hampton School Committee does its job when it comes to advocating for its constituents, the students of East Hampton. There were many disagreements, and these disagreements were conducted in a professional, respectful manner. You would be surprised that this is not always the case. Superintendent Follinsby also deserves a special mention. She has managed and is managing to keep the district moving in the right direction. Again, some may not always agree with her, but no one can state that she's not watching out for the best interests of all the students. I need to publicly thank and recognize the work of the business office personnel, especially Carol Robillard and Maria Lazakowski. For those that do not know, in most school districts, the business office is a catch-all for activities that may not fit specifically within a school mission. These ladies have conducted themselves with the utmost professionalism. They truly went and continue to go above and beyond the call of duty. To some, that phrase is a cliche; for them, it is a fact. Even when the stress level was high, they worked in a manner that I wish could be duplicated in our other clients. I have shared this in the past, and it needs to be repeated. When TMS, the Management Solution, trains new employees, we bring them to East Hampton to witness how a district business office should operate. That is a testament to the leadership in these two individuals. If we can be of any assistance in the future, please do not hesitate to contact us. Regards, Andy Poccat, President of the Management Solution." So we would just like to thank Andy, too, for his outstanding service to our district. We are very grateful for all that he has done for us over the past eight years, and we appreciate his service tremendously. Okay, I believe that's it for correspondence for this evening, so we'll move on to gifts, but I do not think we have any gifts to report tonight. Is that true? That's true. So at this time, we'll move to the public speak portion of our meeting. If anyone here would like to speak to the committee on any topic, that would be the time, this would be the time to do so? It doesn't look as though anyone is here to do that. So we will move on to our finance subcommittee report.
Nothing new at this time.
Okay, and how about our policy subcommittee?
No, nothing to report.
Okay. Wendy, do we have an update on-
Collaborative.
Oh, my colleagues and the public, an apology, I didn't check the date. It's summertime, so the collaborative doesn't meet during the summer. You can get the next meeting date on the website, and I promise to give it to you at our next school committee meeting, but I don't have it in my head.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so I was going to introduce you to our interim Director of Special Education, Sarah Mochek, but apparently she forgot she was being introduced tonight.
Uh-oh.
So we'll have to introduce her next, at the next meeting. But she's joined our team, you know, she's been just a tremendous addition to our team. As I was mentioning to committee members during our work session that started at 6:00, we had another full day of leadership teamwork today with all of the administrators making plans for this next school year, and Sarah was there, and it's just wonderful having her there and having a strong and knowledgeable voice about special education as a member of our team. So I will be delighted to introduce you to her next meeting. Sure, a lot of you know her already, but I'd just like to have Sarah have a chance to talk to you about her plans for this year. So moving on, I wanted to give you an update on the strategic plan. One of the things that we did in our July leadership team meetings, our retreat meetings, kind of a euphemism, retreat, but what it meant is that we spent two whole days at the high school in the conference room, which really is very lovely, and did a lot of good work. And some of the work that we did was to look at our strategic plan, because we really want to keep it always in the forefront and see, and have a accounting of our progress on this plan, and to develop new plans if we feel that they're needed in order to accomplish our goals. So the, I'm going to start with equity and excellence. We have three major strategic objectives in our plan. Equity and excellence is to create an environment where all students are fully engaged in their learning and have equal access to a high-quality curriculum and instruction that meets diverse needs and promotes each student's academic, social, and emotional growth. So our first initiative for year one was to clearly define and articulate current intervention strategies and programs. Unfortunately, we were not able to do that last year for a variety of reasons. You know, a number of our staff were not as available due to health reasons, and so we didn't get to do that. So we need, we actually, during these retreat days, developed a new action plan for doing that this year. We have the key actions, and we have the indicators to show that we have accomplished it, and the people who are responsible. And I'll share those plans with you at a future meeting. The second initiative was to integrate digital literacy into all curriculum areas. I think we made some tremendous progress, we all believe, not just I. We made some tremendous progress in this initiative this year with the help of Ashley Barstow, our Director of Technology. As you can see from the highlighted areas in your plan, we have new computer labs at Maple and Whitebrook. We have keyboarding occurring during library time in grades 1 through 4 with the computers. At the high school, we have Moodle, which is used for classroom instruction, and the iPads are up and running, which we received as part of our new school building project. At the elementary, we also have implemented some iPads for work with our students. We've increased projection capabilities in classrooms. This means that, just like you see the screen here and the projectors mounted on the ceiling, we have that capability in more and more of our classrooms. Ashley Barstow and Darren Paulus' assistant have just been doing a tremendous job of getting this equipment at a very cost, in a very cost-effective way and getting it up quickly. And so we're very excited about that. We have an adaptive technology plan with our special education students. The technology support for teachers has been markedly improved. There is a ticket system. They send in a request for, you know, whatever help they need, and because we have this very efficient staff, they're out there and take care of the problem almost immediately. So there's been great satisfaction in the district. We have better access to adaptive technology. We have increased use of clickers at the high school. We received those as part of the new school building project.
What are clickers?
So they're response systems that the students can hold, and you can put up a question, a survey question, on the screen, and they can click, you know, their answer. Or you can put up a question that you get to choose a response, a multiple response, and you can see how many of the students are on board and on the right track, and if you need to reteach something. So it's really a wonderful tool, but there was not connectivity, the right connectivity between the clickers and our projection system. So again, our new Director of Technology was able to problem-solve that, and so now we have access to our clickers, so we're excited about that. We have increased integration in the classroom versus using technology just for special occasions only. Now, when you walk into our classrooms, more often than not, you see teachers using technology with their students, whereas I would say even a year ago, it was more just on a once-in-a-great-lifetime event where it was something special. So it's really becoming much more integrated into our classroom instruction. And the other thing that our new Director of Technology has done is standardized systems across the district. So we used to have a number of systems in place. We used to have MacBooks, and we used to have PCs, and we used to have software that, you know, was not consistent. So in the last year, he's done a wonderful job of making it more consistent, and this way, we have fewer spots of downtime, because the repairs can happen much more quickly. So we're very excited about that. Number three was develop vertically-aligned protocols and processes for building support team, 504 and District Curriculum Accommodation Plan. We, I have here an action plan required, and again, we did that in our three days of retreat time, so we now have a plan to put that into place. And number four was build a continuum of pre-K to 12 curriculum and instruction aligned with the current Massachusetts frameworks. And you can see here what's currently in place, and we're continuing to work on getting it all in place. So we have a K to 6 Making Meaning Curriculum. This is an ELA curriculum, a reading and writing curriculum. So we've got a wonderful, you know, strand, K to 6. We're doing a lot of professional development with this program this year. We're very excited about it. We have a K to 5 now Math Expressions Program, so we have curriculum in place, K to 5 with math expressions, and then 6 to 8 Connected Math Curriculum. So there's a K to 5 curriculum and the 6 to 8 curriculum. What we were talking about in our meeting earlier today, and my goals, is that now we want to make that transition, so that there's a smooth transition between K to 4 and, or K to 5, rather, and 6 to 8 in the curriculum and in the scope and sequence. And we do have a curriculum in place, 9 to 12, for English Language Arts. So a lot of this was done last year, and this year, we've worked on kind of trying to fill in some of the gaps. You can see the progress we've made, and we'll continue to work on that in this coming school year. And, yes, sorry.
Is the Making Meaning Curriculum new, starting this school year?
It is, no, starting this year. We did, actually, we did pilots in a few grades last year, but we're implementing it consistently, K to 5 this year. Very excited about it. Number five was to implement newly-developed scope and sequences for English Language Arts and Math. And again, we have scope and sequences, but they're not, we don't have that vertical alignment of scope and sequences. So we have developed a plan in our work this summer to do that this coming year. Questions on equity and excellence? And also, I know my administrators are here tonight to answer any questions on the student handbooks, so you want to get finished with this, if you want to ask any of them to come up and give you more details, I'm sure they'd be happy to do that. The next strategic objective is community of learners, which was to cultivate a respectful learning community that promotes success, relevance, and purpose for all educators, students, parents, and educational partners. So our first initiative was to increase digital literacy throughout the community. And again, I think we made some very good progress with this this year. We have the SNAP system. That's a software system for recording all the health plans for our students, and we have it in place at the high school and at the middle school. I think it's fully in place at the middle school or close to it, and we're working on getting it in place at the elementary school. What this means is any substitute nurse can come in and quickly pull up on the computer the health records of any of our students if a student comes in, and our district nurse has, at her command, all of the information on all of our students' immunizations, all of those pertinent health pieces of information. Power School, we have, we're using many more of the features of Power School now. I know many of the parents out in our communities and some of you sitting here have gotten to be good Power School users. We brought it into the elementary this year and plan to do more with it at the elementary as well. Nutrislice, oh, Moodle, sorry. Moodle is a way that our high school teachers are using to bring instruction into the home environment and to flip the classrooms in some cases, so that they can watch their lessons at home and then discuss during classroom time. And, let's see, we have Nutrislice, and I think Andrew Picquette, our Food Service Director, did a presentation on that earlier this year, so parents can go on to the website and look up the menu items and then can tell, just by clicking on them, the grams of fiber and sugar and so forth, so we get much more information on our food service. District Facebook page, we initiated that this year, and it's gotten a lot of good use. Pat Brof has been wonderful and being a good liaison for us with the community, because he clearly talks with a lot of our parents, and when he finds out that they're wanting some piece of information, he lets us know, and we get it up there right away. There've been questions about schedules and teachers and the start of school, so we were, we've gotten some of that information up now, and more will be coming home. Our websites, I think, our building websites, school websites, and our district website have just grown by leaps and bounds this year. I'm so proud of my administrators, the wonderful photos that they've put on their websites, the stories, the announcements, it's just been great. School Reach, we've been using that for voicemail all along when there have been snow cancellations, but this year, we started an email program, so that we can email messages to families. Building principals can do that, and I can do that as a superintendent if there's something that needs to go out, you know, district-wide. We've had shared folders across the district, and I know you, as school committee members, are using those as well. I can put things in our school committee's shared folder, and we have the district's shared folders, we have building-based shared folders, so it's just been a really nice tool for communicating within the district and outside the district. Online surveys, we did a few of those this year and have plans for more next year. Remind 101 is being used at the high school, and I believe that's a text application to send out messages. Am I correct, Kevin? He's nodding yes, so I think I did have that correct.
Oh, an example. I'll give you an example.
Okay.
Like a class advisor would send out reminders for when class dues are due, or permission slips are due for something, or some fundraisers do, or what have you. It's very helpful.
So we're really pleased at everything that we've done this year. Then, number two was employ effective communication strategies to enhance all school and community partnerships. We've really worked hard to form new partnerships this year. We're doing that through School Reach, through Facebook, websites, online surveys. E2C2 is the East Hampton Early Childhood Council. We've gotten more participation with them. And our preschools, kindergarten outreach, you know, we had that wonderful PTO involvement with our outreach to potential kindergarten families. We have before and after-school connections with our families, our administrators. There's an expectation that they're going to be out there greeting their families when they come to drop their children off, and out there when they're coming to pick them up. And that's been a great time for our administrators to make connections with their families. You know, we've tried to have a media presence, and we've had a number of articles in the paper. We've had things on the DUCY website, which has been wonderful, featuring our high school, and we're going to work more on that this year. The art department at the high school had a gallery show, and they've worked with the arts community here in East Hampton. Our garden projects have been tremendous, bringing our families in, our children and our families, to work on our gardens. We have garden projects in our, all of our elementary schools and our middle school. And we've made a number of connections with local businesses who've helped to support our different initiatives in our schools. We're very pleased with that. Number three is teachers and administrators will collaborate to create goals that align with state standards and district strategic initiatives. We completed that this past year and will again this year. Number four, use meeting time to work collaboratively on achieving targeted goals and products. And so I've articulated here some of the ways we're doing this. At the high school, professional development is occurring during faculty meetings and department meetings, so there are collaborative opportunities there. At Whitebrook, the monthly curriculum meetings are opportunities for our teachers to collaborate. And at the elementary level, the monthly grade-level meetings are opportunities for the teachers from all grade levels to get together and collaborate on our, what they were doing this year was working on our curriculum pieces and bringing more consistency into So number six was use the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System as a framework to support district and school improvement, and we certainly have done that this year with our observations and our goal-setting and really aligning teachers' goals with their administrator's school improvement plans, with my district improvement plan, and with our strategic plan. Any questions on community of learners? And today, we were also making action plans for what we're going to do for this year, for year two, and those initiatives. So we've got some exciting things in the works for this year. And the last strategic objective is data-driven, to collaborate, to analyze, and apply data appropriately to guide meaningful decisions that improve student learning and educator, school, and system performance. So number one was to develop a systemic plan for data collection and analysis. The plan was, is in place at the elementary for English Language Arts and Math with, again, Ashley Barstow's help. He created a program, developed a program where teachers could download their, or upload their data, and it would take the data and put it in graphs, and wonderful aptitudes for analyzing the data. And now, we're talking today about doing that district-wide with our district-determined measures. The high school, as you know, has done a tremendous amount with data teamwork, data team training, and their learning walks, and as I say, we're very proud that their model has been featured on the DUCY website, and I gave you all the link to that, little, nice little videos of our high school. Very proud of that. Number two, to assess alignment of resources and allocate all resources to support strategic objectives. A few of the things that we've put into place, we did by aligning our resources, our resources from DSAC, from the state support system called DSAC. So we bought our Making Meaning resources with that, technology purchases and allocation. We used a special education grant to put some professional development and clinical support for our school psychologists in, that social and emotional professional development. East Hampton High School has really funneled all of their professional development resources towards that wonderful model that they have in place there. Whitebrook used resources they had to bring the Virtues Project into our middle school. That's been very successful. Our math professional development, we collaborated with Ann Collins from Leslie College. She had a grant, and she was willing to use, to bring us into the grant, to come and be able to use, to provide support for our teachers at the middle school. Staffing reassignments, we did that, we did some reassignments, so that we could have a full-day pre-K program this year for the first time, as well as our half-day programs. And we also were able to reallocate resources with the city's help to bring a full-time Director of Business Services to the district, something that we'd all felt that, you know, would help us be more comprehensive in our approach to the financial aspect of running a school department. Any questions on that?
I have heard some very positive feedback on that move, to have somebody full-time here.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a very good decision.
I, you know, and thank you to the mayor, because she's certainly helped me work this out, and-
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's been a tremendous, I think everybody's very happy with it, so that we have somebody to do a few more things in the district, so.
Not a question, but, not meant to be cliche at all, but kudos to you, Nancy, and to all of you guys, administrators, because you really, I mean, that's just a mouthful of stuff you've rattled off, and really, that's only the tip of the iceberg. That's not the day-to-day instruction and wonderful things you do on behalf of our kids, and you do it with very little resources, and you do really top, top, top-shelf work. So thank you really, truly, to all of you.
They do. We have very dedicated administrators and staff, obviously, in our district. We're very proud of that. Okay, the next thing I'll do then is move to my goals, which I'm going to present to you for approval this evening. We did have a goals workshop this evening before the meeting, so that I could get some more feedback from, from school committee members. My goals, I've shared with my administrators, draft goals, and so now they're going to be getting to work on their school improvement goals, their student learning goals, professional practice, and again, that alignment is so important to us. So my professional practice goal is around school visits, and it's to increase my visits to schools for the Educator Evaluation System observations, from one visit per month for classroom observation to two visits per month at each building. What we've done in the past is we've had one visit where I come and I visit at least two classrooms with the building administrator and oftentimes the assistant principal, so the principal and the assistant principal. And then we follow that with dialogue. So I ask them what they think went well, and then some reflective questions, and we just have a really good conversation about what we saw and whether we're seeing evidence of the initiatives that we want to see in place in our classrooms. This year, I am in schools a lot besides those observations, but this year, what I have added to my goal is to provide feedback to administrators when I'm stopping in for this thing or that thing, and, you know, whatever I might happen to see, to send a quick email with some feedback on those aspects of the building administrator's responsibilities. And it might be that, well, for instance, I'll just give one example. Last year, I happened to be there during a fire drill, and that's what made me think about this. It was done so well and so efficiently, that when I got back, I sent an email just, you know, noting that, you know, how well that had been done. So I do want to, I do want to continue that this year and do more of that. And then you can see that I have key actions and benchmarks to measure that. The student learning goal is achievement gap, and again, this is a state requirement, that we close that achievement gap. And I'm proposing that we do that by having each of, we're going to focus on mathematics this year, since mathematics is the area that our data shows us, you know, we need to show the most growth. We have some really good pockets of growth. For instance, at the high school, we have a high percentage of our students in proficient and advanced, and we have some, as I say, some really great pockets of wonderful achievement in mathematics, but it's not consistent, K to 12. So I wanted to focus on mathematics this year and to really get into place a consistent curriculum, consistent scope and sequence, consistent assessments, and a monitoring of student progress, so that we can achieve what I know we're all capable of achieving. One of our biggest issues is the transition years. I think that's hard in every school district, and so we want to focus there when our students go from 4th grade to 5th grade. We, we've already taken a step in that direction. We've implemented a program called Math Expressions. We did have it in just- We did have it in just K to four, so now we have it in K to five. So, we've got a bridge there. But then, between fifth grade and sixth grade, we have another program. So, we want to work at really making that curriculum and scope and sequence smooth. And then, again, from eighth grade into ninth grade so that we know that our children, our students, are really well-prepared when they go to the high school for the mathematics that they're going to take at the high school. So, my goal was about having the administrators have a key action in their student learning goal for improving student achievement in mathematics by increasing the number of students in the advanced level of the state assessment and narrowing the gap in performance between special education and regular education students. The overall goal is to move more students into higher levels on the state assessments. Now, by saying, by articulating that it will be a key action, I'm going to give each administrator the ability to use his or her data to determine what that key action needs to be. What's the area of focus at each school in order to help us achieve this goal and our goal in the strategic plan of having that consistent curriculum and scope and sequence? Any questions on that? I know we had a big conversation about it earlier. My first district improvement goal is curriculum frameworks alignment. And again, to make sure that this is clearly in place in mathematics, we'll have a curriculum and a scope and sequence that is aligned with the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks for Mathematics. We do have a curriculum that's aligned, but our scope and sequence is not aligned completely, and it's not aligned K to 12. So, K to four is aligned, five to eight is aligned, nine to 12 is aligned. But we need to make that a consistent vertical alignment. So, that'll be the focus this year. So, that will be to complete all the curriculum documents, if there any that aren't completed, and the scope and sequence documents, and to align our assessments with the curriculum and with the scope and sequence. And that fits nicely with the next, I think it's the next one, district improvement goal, which is district-determined measures. Again, a requirement from the state. We were granted another year to work on piloting our district-determined measures. So, the goal is to develop district-determined measures for all grades and subjects by June of 2016. We have district-determined measures for most grades and subjects already. But what we're finding is some of them aren't as useful to us in determining student growth. In piloting them this year, we discovered that some of them really weren't giving us the information that we wanted or needed. So, with the help of our Director of Curriculum, Polly Parker, who's a data specialist, she's looking at the district-determined measures now. And she's working with building administrators to think about how we revise them so that they do measure that growth, so that they're useful tools for our teachers, and also help us track progress of our students in K to 12. So, we're going to think about what we currently have and then develop our action plan for piloting our new district-determined measures. And again, Polly Parker, our Director of Curriculum, will be the person, the point person for this goal. And the last goal is improving communication, always a goal for us, all of my administrators, for myself as well, and I know for the school committee. So, by June of 2016, we'll have new ways of communicating effectively with parents, staff, and school committee members. And the community will be in evidence in the district. And so, we did a lot this year, but we want to do more. The key actions, and we changed some of these in my conversations with the school committee members tonight. And the first one is to develop a mid-year and an end-of-year survey to give parents an opportunity to provide feedback on our schools. And we want to institutionalize this so that it's something that occurs every year, and it's an opportunity for parents to give us feedback. And we'll use that feedback. We'll analyze it, and we'll share it back, and we'll think about, you know, the action steps that we're going to take, create an action plan for that. We'll also develop a survey, which we also actually have developed already, for East Hampton parents who are, who have chosen to send their children to other schools, choice or charter schools, to ask them for feedback on why they have chosen other schools and, you know, what the reasons were. And again, we'll collect that data, analyze it, and think about, you know, what action steps we need to take as a school district to encourage all of our families in East Hampton to come to our schools, to experience the wonderful educational opportunities that we have here in East Hampton. Another key action is to continue work on developing a vibrant website for promoting our school district. We added Why Choose East Hampton. We had a number of families who were willing to be interviewed and photographed, and that was great. We want to do more of that. And we also are talking about putting a part on each of the building-based webpages with ways, with advice to parents on how they can contact someone if they have a concern. So, you know, it might be entitled, "I have a concern." This is how you get results, that kind of thing. So, we're working on that. We'll continue to work with the Outreach Advisory Committee to develop new means of communication. And we're also hoping to bring more new members into our Outreach Advisory Committee this year to help us get some new ideas. And my, another key action is to develop a program for ECAT for presenting news about our schools. Kathy Lynch and I talked about this several times last year. But with all that was going on, we never did manage to get it up and running. The program would be probably a weekly interview that I would do with building administrators or teachers, you know, about some of the events that are going on in the school. And it's another way of, you know, helping our community know what's going on in our schools, all the positive things. And the school committee members talked about having me provide them a steady stream of information on our schools through email. What we've done in the past is we've been struggling with the Educator Evaluation System is at the end of the school year, I give them a whole lot of information all at once, which is challenging for me to bring that all together and challenging for them to look at. So, I believe it was a school committee member sitting to my left here who had this great idea. And so, already, I have started sending emails. I sent the agendas for our leadership team retreats and notices about things that are going on in our district. And so, I think it's going to work out well for all of us and keep us all more aware of what's going on in the schools. And since this was a goal for me, I asked my administrators today if they would, in turn, send me emails about the things that are going on in their schools because so many wonderful things are going on. And this is just a way of getting that information out to everyone. So, any questions on any of that? And if not, I would request your approval of my goals.
So, we need to vote on that?
So, I make a motion to approve the Superintendent's 2015 through 2016 goals.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Thank you, thank you. So, my administrators sitting out there now, you can start going to work on your goals, which they have already, I'm sure. Okay, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
It's you again.
That's okay. Next on our agenda, we have, well, we're going to bump up the addition on student handbooks next on the agenda. So, let's start off with the East Hampton High School handbook.
And I do have one thing that I want to add. The copy that you've got had the changes highlighted. But there was another change that came in after that went out to you. We were waiting for our school department attorney to give us a little guidance on the new absence policies and regulations so that we could, you know, we use what we had and then add the new pieces. So, you have with you tonight, the first page is the additions to the high school attendance policy. And maybe what I should do is have Kevin come up and just talk a little bit about this. I think that might be easier than you trying to read it now if you haven't had a chance to look at it beforehand. And then, you could also ask Kevin any other questions you have about his handbook.
Sorry, I don't have anything to project. All the changes are really changes due to the Mass State laws that have been passed down. So, there's no real direct policy change that's been administered through the high school. But we did change our attendance policy, our dropout policy, and I think those were the two main.
And there's a requirement now that.
The absentee policy, as far as making sure that we align with the Mass State laws.
And that parents provide a written excuse for an absence of a child. That, and for the high schools, you can see there's the withdrawals from school is really like a dropout policy. So, there are steps that we have to take now if a student is not in school for a certain number of days, a 10 days of unexcused absence, so that we're not having students fall through the cracks. So, if a student has been absent for 10, has had 10 unexcused absences, we need to get in touch with the student's parents and try to see if we can work out a way to bring this student back into our schools. You know, we want to promote every one of our students graduating. I know our high school's done a really good job of this in the past.
Then, I, the other changes also have to do with suspensions. And once again, there's no changes in any of our policies in particular, but it was changes given to us by our lawyers to make sure that our wording works within the state laws.
And that one was already in your handbook.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you very much. Do we need to officially vote, or?
Yes.
I do. Is there a motion for the East Hampton High School handbook?
Motion to approve the East Hampton High School 2015 through 2016 handbook.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, on to White Brook Middle School. We have Ms. Belize here to talk about that handbook.
And your second handout that you were given tonight shows the addition to their policy. Some of the student handbooks already had in the elements of the requirements for absence policies. And so, they didn't have to put as much in. So, there's really just one part that was added.
Yeah, we just added one part. The big change for the new law is we've, in the past, notified parents after 10 days. And now, it's after five days that we have to notify a parent and have a meeting.
That's good.
And we don't have any other changes. We have the same, just Mass General law updates that we all had, the whole district, on the suspension and the absence. And that, those are the only changes we have this year, and just updated staff list.
That reminds me, before we let you go, the school committee does have a school committee message that we would like to give to each of you for inclusion in your handbooks and ask you to take out anything that might be there currently.
Okay.
Yeah, we all have one at the beginning.
Or if you don't have one, just add this to it. So, through Nancy, Nancy will.
Email it to.
Email it to her.
And we'll just take the other one out?
Yes, if you could replace it, that would be great.
That'd be great. It's a little update.
Yeah. Any other questions for Ms. Belize? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the White Brook Middle School 2015-2016 handbook.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, we have the elementary school handbook.
The only real changes that we have, we have the staff update changes. We had a slight change to the literacy section under curriculum and the math section under curriculum. It just made it much more clear as to what really happens in our schools with regards to the literacy and math curriculum. And we included a little piece about asking students not to wear flip-flops to school because they're not safe. But those were our big changes. We made the changes about attendance and about the suspension, but that was, those were the big ones.
And you have that as a handout tonight, too.
Is it five days for elementary as well?
It is, it's part of the law, yeah. And it's unexcused, which there is the difference between excused versus unexcused, which is pretty well-laid out in the policy.
But the policy also includes tardies. So, we'll be tracking those in a much more aggressive, you know, much more consistent, proactive way.
Any other questions? We're all set. Thank you.
So, I make a motion to approve the elementary school handbooks for 2015-2016.
Second.
Discussion, all set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to minutes. Yes, approval of minutes of our July 21st regular session meeting.
A motion to approve the minutes of the July 21st regular session meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Lastly, motion to approve the minutes from the work session from July 22nd, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor? And we have one abstention.
I believe I have to abstain or?
Yes.
Oh, that's right.
One abstention.
Do I write that on, on here?
I don't think you need to. I just, so you'll take care of that for us.
The abstention.
Yes.
Did you vote on the previous one?
I did.
You did. Just not the work session.
Not the work, not the work session.
Regular session, she voted on the work session, she abstained.
Okay. Or some payroll.
There's, oops. There's only one. Is there one pink? Motion to approve the school payroll dated August 6th, 2015 in the amount of $280,837.50.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Abstained?
You got Dan's abstention on that?
Yeah.
I move to approve the council payable authorization for payment dated August 6th, 2015 in the amount of $128,239.22.
Second.
All those in favor?
That's it?
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion for adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.